That we're working on for renewal for July 1 is the trash contract with Republic. We had tentatively scheduled, as you know, a vote of the board two weeks from tonight on the 25th to exercise our option to extend from a three up to five years. So the third year ends this coming June 30th. To that end, our DPW director, John Haynes, has been working with the company and he's got some things that he needs to run by you tonight instead of waiting till the 25th, you know, and deliberating and taking a vote that night. I've asked him to come in and talk about that. Give you a couple of weeks to absorb his report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you for taking some time just to...
For this, I provided the general framework of the proposal to the board Friday. It was when we received it. Actually, Peter had the opportunity, ladies on the DPW, to sit with us on, that was Friday afternoon, when we spoke with Chris Masary. He's the municipal representative for Republic Service. Republic Service has been servicing the town's solid waste collection program for about a pattern of 20-plus years now. And we have an excellent ongoing relationship and it's incredible how fast three years go. It seems like we were just here last year.
Certainly does.
But we are at the end of our contract period. Again, we have an option within our existing contract to extend simply with a vote of the board moving forward for the two-year extension, which was part of the original RFP proposal we put out in 2018. So there's been some seismic shifts over the last three years in the recycling, in the solid waste market particularly with recyclables and the, what's referred to as the Chinese tip of the spear, where the Chinese, most of our recyclable materials were all going to China. In, was it late 2018? That market essentially collapsed. China said they would no longer take the world's recyclables. So everyone's been scrambling for other venues, other opportunities to manage our recycling. So that's driven recycling costs up 15, 20, 30% in some cases. To one point, we were paying over $115 a ton for recycling. Then move forward and the COVID impacts, impact, turn the solid waste stream upside down from essentially moving, you have to imagine, all the institutional municipal, private restaurants, businesses, and things like that came to a squeaking halt. There was no tonnage. All that solid waste tonnage reverted back to residential. So the residential collection portion has increased astronomically as well as, as we've all dealt with, the safety procedures, protocols, keeping people safe at work has all driven up operational costs significantly. We are seeing a, I think it's approximately 11% increase in our solid waste tonnage year to year. Again, that's if you imagine everybody's been at home for the last year. Not only are we at home eating, you know, utilizing Amazon, every kind of material you can bring in the house to eliminate the, you know, the issues of going out in public for a while, but also while we're all home with nothing to do, what we were doing, cleaning out our houses. You know, it was an opportunity to get in your basement, clean out. So we've seen our tonnage go up significantly. And as a result, that's driving the cost of solid waste up because we are in a position in Massachusetts where there are no landfills being, continuing to move into operation. There's too small landfills that are existing. They're all being phased out. And even in East Bridgewater's case, our trash, our municipal trash goes, is incinerated at the Covanta plant in Rochester, but they have a capacity too. So now it's actually forcing our haulers to send our trash out of state. It's going by rail car. So there's an additional expense to move, you know, so the trash we generate at my house in East Bridgewater maybe ended up in North Carolina. It's incredible. But with that, you know, it's impacting costs on all fronts. That said, I still think our program moving forward isn't, from some of the decisions the board moved forward last year, we've stabilized some of our expenses and our costs and our revenue projections are on track with where we anticipated. So I think it's going to allow us to remain, to stabilize, to keep our price point constant, at least for the year moving forward. Once we have a little bit better idea and we see how things within the markets and such start to stabilize and move forward, people return to work, some of that string comes off our residential side of collection, hopefully we'll see the percentage of our trash tonnage start to stabilize a bit and we'll see pricing stabilize. Where actually, one bit of silver lining is two and a half years later now, the recycling market is starting to domestically, the domestic recycling market is starting to develop. And therefore, we're seeing prices start to come down with the disposal, it's not actually disposal costs, it's called processing.
Processing, thank you.
The processing fees are starting to balance out and we're actually looking at a point where, once again, it will be, there'll be incentive to recycle beyond, you know, the environmental benefit, but the financial impacts of recycling, we'll actually begin to see a general betterment to taking that municipal solid waste out of the waste stream, the recyclable materials, and it won't be at a significant cost more than to throw it out. I think some of the pricing is now kind of turning back and we're looking at costs in the mid-70s to 80s dollars per ton to recycle and what was in the mid-70s for disposal of solid waste is now we're looking, we're going to end up in around the $92 a ton market. So we're actually going to move back to seeing the, not only the environmental, but the economic benefit to recycling as well as a market for recyclables developing. Part of the, part of the issue was there was no, there was no market for these recyclables. So the expense, what was happening was we were actually seeing our processing fees for recycling, all the costs related to processing, and then there was no market anyway. And all of these end users were forced to dispose of the recyclables. So they were all going in the trash anyway. That's starting to change. There's a market developing. So again, in front of you tonight, we've been working at this and just looking for the board's directive and I won't say blessing, but to continue these negotiations based on the information we have and move forward so that, you know, we can bring that proposal in front of the board in the next couple of weeks.
Do you anticipate, based on negotiations so far, that we will have solid figures in front of us by the 25th?
I would, yes. I would anticipate we'd be able to provide what would be contractual obligation.
Okay.
As far as the collection portion, again, the disposal is all, that always fluctuates very much, as I've always said, that's the X factor in our whole program. How much you or I throw out or recycle each week can change dramatically. So they'll, that'll always be somewhat of a moving target. We use, you know, sort of a three to five-year estimate. Again, the last year has, you know, we're going to take that right out.
And hopefully they're agreeable today. Yeah, I think we should definitely ask you to move along and if you had any obstacles between now and the 25th, just to keep us informed.
I think that's what I think, Mr. President.
I have a question. I think I know the answer, but I think for, you know, for public consumption, it's important. The nature of this contract with Republic is there's a fixed cost for the collection and deposit of trash products, you know, at a recycling facility or on the tipping floor, and that's a fixed cost. And the variable portion of that is whatever the market price is for recyclables and the like like that.
Absolutely. So for figures, what we're looking at is currently for FY '21, our collection cost, collection cost is exactly what Jim said. That's the cost of the truck to drive around to, you know, the 2850 residences and pick up your trash and solid and recyclables and take them to the processing plant for recycling, the facility in Rochester to be incinerated. That's a fixed cost. We pay that, you know, we know that cost every year. In FY '21, it was $597,000. To anticipate, the number we're working with right now for FY '22 cost would be $614,000. We have a cap on that, what that cost can escalate every year moving forward. And then we have the disposal cost, which is sort of a pass-through. We pay what Republic is, what the market bears.
So if I, if I may continue, Mr. Chairman. So it's safe to conclude that the decision for the board to make on whether or not to extend the contract is really whether or not Republic has performed the function that they promised to in the first three years, that is, to collect on a timely basis and to do all those things like that. And that's really the sum and substance of the decision on whether or not to extend this contract.
I would agree.
The rest, the rest of market fact is that we, you know, would love to control, but, you know, but can't. So is that a fair?
Absolutely.
Is that a fair assessment? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter?
Briefly, I sat and did sit in the meeting. I was astonished by the fact that, you know, a lot of this money that's absorbed by the collection from the residents comes from drive time and wait time to dump. Obviously, there's not only a few options for them. So the second point that, you know, I've heard quite a bit, and I'm sure both you have, is some of the private contractors and what their ability is to do to compete in some fashion with the town. It looks as to me that, you know, there's only a couple of options for them to do the same thing as far as delivering the goods. And again, I was, I will jump on Jim's point that it really just comes down to the job they're doing in East Bridgewater. I mean, if, you know, the DPW seems to think that they're doing the job that they've been requested to do for the money that they're being charged, then, you know, I think that's, that's really what we're looking at in a couple of weeks.
Another significant component that I missed, and we don't often think about it, but the prevailing wage rate that the drivers, because it's a municipal position, even though they are employees of the town, they're contracted, they still make what's referred to the prevailing wage, that rate, which is, again, that's entirely outside of the Republic Services control except by the state, that has increased.
30%.
30% from year to year. So it went from $32 to $42 per hour that the contractor is obligated to pay the driver.
And that ties into your wait time.
Yeah, yeah.
So they, you know, they drive around six or seven hours and they go.
The same problem exists, I think, Rob, with, you know, not just with the town and our deal, but with any, any other contractor that you're looking at.
Right.
That's it. Thanks.
Carol?
I appreciate how well you explained this. I remember three years ago when you explained to us about recycling in China and how that had changed. I appreciate that you've explained it again in a way that it makes sense, you know, and it's unfortunate. Nobody could have predicted COVID and all those takeout containers that, you know, we all had to get rid of and all the Amazon boxes. I know that, you know, that's impacted everybody. So appreciate that and look forward to getting more information from you in a couple of weeks.
We will continue on and hopefully have a package to present to you by the 25th.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, John.
Thank you. John, don't go, please.
Rob, you can go.
We are on the TA report. We're talking about while you're here and Pete is here. We did have a conversation today about the, you want to say something about the Church Street basketball courts?
Yes. I know that the condition of the Church Street basketball courts has been brought to a number of different individuals and board's concerns, and we've recognized that as well ourselves and have discussed it with the Recreation Commission also, there's several members here tonight. And based on our concerns and what we've seen there, and even I think the fire chief had some existing concerns that he's identified, we went out and, you know, visually, I've observed the concerns, but we also took the next step further and started to look at some alternatives. And we brought in a company that specializes in athletic surfaces. They work on tracks and courts and tennis courts and things like that. And they, we brought them down there with us, the facilities manager and myself, and looked for an outside opinion, let's say, expertise because I still feel, you know, it's a, it's a benefit to the community and we were looking for anything we could do that could preserve that because I always feel like, once you lose something like that, it's much difficult, much more difficult to get it back than it is to try and preserve what we have. So we were looking at observations, alternatives for preservation, and sadly, even the opinion of the surfacing company that works on this all over the nation, and they put it in writing, was that they feel that court, the basketball courts are in an unsafe condition for play. And given that, we felt it's important at this time to, what I'd like to see is if we could, again, ask for perhaps the advice of Meyer, to our insurance provider, to come out and give us some input as well on what their recommendations may be as how the town would move forward. Also with that, though, as I just said, I hate to see us lose something that particular right now, I think is of huge value to the community, and I know the Recreation Commission supports this as well, and I've had individual conversations with members of the board. There's all an opportunity, we can, we can take this and make an opportunity out of something and to reutilize a space and provide that benefit to our, you know, to our citizens. So I'd like the opportunity to continue to kind of look forward at what we could do with some existing space down there and repurpose it. I'm referring to the street hockey rink. I think a lot of people are familiar with that. It's an area that's underutilized right now, and I think we could possibly repurpose that to not only meet the need of installing a few new basketball courts to take the place of the ones that'll have to be removed, but possibly some other multi-use surface at the same time. Pickleball.
Pickleball comes to my mind.
So.
You know, you don't know a pickleball, let's Google it.
You had him at pickleball.
I guess so.
So we've had conversations, the members of the rec here, any questions on that? But the, it was fairly evident, but I also, once a company that does this is willing to put it in writing that they have identified concerns, at least I don't know that we should allow any more sanctioned events on that. Well, I, actually, I'm not going to speak any further. I'm not an insurance expert, so I'll leave.
Definitely, you're right when you say, we have an opportunity to use something that can't be used safely right now. Now's the opportunity, Recreation Commission is moving in the right direction and let's go, you know, let's get something started with this and not keep talking about it. And Chief Harman would like to talk.
I took a drive down today. I took a few pictures of all of these with you, Mr. Chairman. Big one for the Recreation Commission. Does anyone see that? On the, on the front fields, the Little League fields, you'll notice all the pictures, they have their electrical conduit, there's wiring inside of those, those wires are live. They need to be repaired. I think it's short money. I think it's something that is apparent on the Recreation, not on the Recreation, like the Little League, EB Little League, they could do those repairs. I think the town would just have to invest a couple of dollars in the, the cost actually due, you know, the replacement parts. Right now, I didn't find any wiring that was shaved or anything like that, so I did not notify the wiring inspector. However, those, those are glaring issues right there that could potentially cause a problem mainly for a younger kid who can't keep his fingers out of everything.
We'd probably want to see those repaired before we bring down the insurance company.
Yeah, and as far as our backs concerned, I know I spoke with you, Mr. Sheedy, back in October. There was issues with the same type of deal with electrical, there's wiring that's just out there. I was assured that the wiring is not energized. However, my concern is that you have bare wire, cannot be energized. Someone hit a switch somewhere and energized that and create a problem. So that, in concert with the basketball courts and repurposing that ice skating rink, all that would have to be, you know, taken care of as well. Other than that, I'll, any questions from the Recreation Commission or the selectmen?
I've been down there quite a bit and it is, it's an accident weight to happen. And I, again, now's the time. Now's the time to get, be it pickleball or anything else, down there, a safe area and make sure that things like this get, get fixed first, and then the Recreation Commission will have, you know, a pleasant process of determining what, what will be the best thing for our community down there. And I think it definitely can be multi-purpose uses.
You have our attention, so.
Yep.
Peter, anything?
Yeah, so, I mean, we've been talking about this for some weeks now. I, myself and John have attended quite a few meetings with the rec department, had conversations with many of the members. We brought Jen Poole in to start to gather that information. I know she's spoken to a lot of the local sports organizations already. They're aware of what we're trying to do, and it's not to take over those facilities, but it's certainly to partner with them in order to rectify some of the situations. This particular situation here, I do remember seeing the email from Chief Harden regarding the property down there, specifically talking about the basketball courts and the inline hockey area. You know, I agree in our discussion today that we need to reach out to the insurance company. They will give us a free assessment of not only that area, but anything else that may come up, they should at least. And that will help us to really take a look at what those problems are that we know exist already and what problems we may have not picked up on. My issue is, as well as John's is, is that, you know, once we put them on notification and then we're on notification, it's, you know, we're saying there's a liability down there. You know, with liability, what comes from the insurance companies, having been in that business for a long time, is completely shut it down. You know, I mean, fence it off, wire it up, barrel it up, whatever you got to do and stop people from utilizing, the kids mostly, from utilizing that product. We've done that before. We originally didn't have a fence down in the old skate park down here. Put a fence up after there were some concerns. What happened, they started climbing the fence, a couple fell off, one broke his arm. I mean, it became a bigger, a bigger issue. I agree that we need to find a way to do this. Unfortunately, we're past the time to put in a capital expense for this. I'm assuming John has some numbers, as well as John Shea. I think they're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of about $24,000 to rectify the situation, not only clean it up, demolish and refix some of the area. We're talking about completely getting rid of the basketball courts, and I don't mean to speak over any of the rec people here that are here tonight, but in being in those conversations, John, just get rid of the basketball courts, take down the boards, fix the inline skating facility to be maybe one or two basketball hoops, David's pickleball court, and go forward with that. Again, I don't know if there, we kind of discussed a way that that could be done. I do know that in speaking to John Shea, who's been the treasurer over there for a while, and now she has that position with Tom Williams, I'll say she has it, that they are, they do have some funds in that account. I think somewhere close to, I think what John told me is about, what, 33 or $39,000 or something around that area?
33 and then now, I mean, there's nine committed, so it's probably not.
Other processes, yeah. So, I mean, unless there's something that, you know, that we cannot do, and again, I will be the first to admit that I do not understand municipal law or what can happen, what can't happen. I mean, to me, the most confusing thing is if something's broken, you fix it. But unfortunately, you have to go through a chain of command in order to get to that fix part. And again, I don't want to lose something and shut somebody down, especially those kids. I've been down that softball field with my daughter, watching her, and I'm telling you, there's a dozen kids out there at any given time still shooting hoops, just because there isn't another area. We did discuss maybe middle school, the back area there, the old tennis courts. Problem there is that we have the school still utilizing that for before and after care because they were all moved down to that other facility. So I guess I'm looking for an opinion, maybe some counsel from either one of you, one of my selectmen here, or from, I thought maybe Phyllis might be here, but she's not, but maybe Melissa has an idea of how we may be able to utilize some of those funds and potentially bring some, some funds in if we have to bring it up to, you know, another $10,000 or $15,000 in order to start that process. I mean, I just don't want to see an opportunity go by. I don't mean to...
David also mentioned some opportunity and he might, if we, I think he'll elaborate on.
The next federal plan, the ARP plan, when we, we'll be getting some money into the town of East Bridgewater. A lot of it being controlled by the town of East Bridgewater itself. If we're talking, the numbers we're talking now, we'll be getting a lot of money in and we'll have to, as a town, as a board, you know, prioritize what has to be done, trying to make sure that every, you know, culture, everything in town gets some of this money for its use. When we had the last plan, Plymouth County Treasurer and Commissioners down there, they did all of our CARES Act. This will be a little bit different, but I believe that there can be some money there, but we're not going to see that money probably until July or August.
And, and more clarification on how we can spend it.
I think maybe working collaboratively, we can come up with some alternatives. I think the big thing right now is how do we make the area safe?
Right.
And then how do we make sure that we don't lose the investment that's there? How do we, how do we maintain that and continue that in the future?
We'll continue the conversation down until we see where, where the money is and I'm sure we'll, we'll find it.
Well, I'd like to, yeah, I mean, you know, with, obviously with you both agreeing, at least give the opportunity to the rec. I know, I think they have another meeting maybe next week, hopefully.
20th.
What is it?
20th.
Okay, 20th, great. To, you know, look at some options, maybe even through the financial team's office down here to see if there's some opportunity to, you know, maybe push it a little bit, a little bit faster, you know, and try to get that done. I'm not using it a little fast.
Peter doesn't understand town government yet.
Just so we don't lose that opportunity, you know, and like I said, at least if they have something, maybe come back and present it to us in two weeks that seems reasonable and fair, then I think it's an opportunity, not just for the kids, but for David as well.
For David's pickleball.
Carol?
I don't, I mean, I don't really have anything to add. I think that Peter, sounds like you've got a good handle on it, and you too, John, and the chief, so I'm sure that Jim can help with facilitating any of that as well. And he has a pretty good understanding of municipal finance and where we can spend what money, so.
We'll figure it out. It'll get done.
I figured. Thank you.
I think Mike, Jake can tell, yeah, of course.
Just as, you know, being a resident at the town for 24-plus years and being up in that area quite a bit with my kids who now, you know, they're all grown up, like, what about sponsorships? And this is just to throw it up, like private, you know, accomplished medical center or somebody to maybe name the facility or sponsor one of those areas of it, just to throw it out there. I know in the past, we looked at that, you know, going back a few years, looking at different opportunities for sponsorships up here. So just to throw it out there, to approach some of these big corporations that might want to have some type of sponsorship up there.
And we have the same thing when you look over at the football and the track team, you'll have all those flags being sponsored there. Again, we can go that route with it and cut down the cost of the individuals to the town. And you're right, it's, I'm sure this is, all the media's in the state of hearing this conversation. You know, we can get one donor that could come in and say, use my name and let's go for her, and we can all hope for something like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. President, anything else?
Jim, no. Back on the TA report, in the interest of time, I'll just cover one more item because I think it's important to announce publicly that our Health Department services are ongoing and functioning fairly smoothly. And one of the service gaps we had on a very short-term basis, we have filled, we have, we've entered into a services contract with Bucker and Sons of Middleboro, Mass. to address Title V issues. We have five or six plans that are awaiting approval for the Board of Health. We have five or six plans that are awaiting approval for the Board of Health. You know, those things will be addressed, and all incoming things will be addressed again. So it's nearly business as usual back there. I think that's the thing that I wanted to get out there to, you know, to the public. So we're open, come see us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks. Okay, and again, my apologies, it's now time for the Friends of East Bridgewater Trails to come up and wow the crowd.
So, good evening, and thank you for having us, and we're very happy to be here tonight. My name is Diane Whitmarsh Phillips, and I am a past president of the Friends of East Bridgewater Trails. Tonight, we have Petra Wrights, here in the orange, who is the now current chair, and Dr. Michael Banksen behind me, who is our treasurer, who will be speaking tonight. Also including Howard Wilber here, is our most oldest longstanding member, and is still very active. This committee has a very long history of supporting open space and walking trails. I originally attended a guided hike in the mid-1970s led by Joan Leland, you might not remember her, Madhri Windsor, Howard's sister, and Marilyn Johnson. Madhri and Joan both prepared a map, and I have that map here, it's dated 1973, and it was sponsored by the Conservation Commission, listing 33 public accessible trails and open areas in East Bridgewater, noting 20 historic sites that were along the way. Sadly, access to many of these trails and open lands has diminished over the years. Our current Friends of East Bridgewater Trails has, was founded in 2006 with a mission for trail maintenance, community awareness, protection, volunteer recruitment, information gathering, maps and signage, a large task for a few group of few people. We have developed and maintained the Windsor Trail off of Bennett Lane and along the Sutucket River, the Sagem Rock Farm Trail, the Leland Farm Trail, the Poor Meadow Brook Trail. Often, these renovations have been Eagle Scout projects. Maintenance includes brush and tree cutting, river crossing, bridges, and mulch spreading as in trail maintenance, and amongst others. We have worked with other towns, namely Bridgewater and Hanson, to coordinate efforts in trail development. We have developed maps and using the more current GPS technologies. Probably our most visible and successful achievement has been the annual Pumpkin Festival, I don't know if any of you, I know some of you, I've seen some faces there, that highlights a different trail each year, and involves community groups, schools, and families. This event has brought up to 900 friends and families of East Bridgewater out for a wonderful fall event. Really, one year, we had 900 people, a campfire, and cooking marshmallows, and try managing kids around a campfire was quite a challenge, but we did it. We also have sponsored yearly Earth Day cleanups around town, and pre-COVID, we were sponsoring a monthly guided walk, attended by so many people, not only from East Bridgewater, but out of town. Many town organizations have been involved throughout the years, including scouts, schools, public library, the Recreation Commission, we were actually part of your committee for a while, we probably still are on the books, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, the YMCA, and the, is John still here? And the Highway Department. I wrote in my notes, I didn't know you were going to be here tonight, John, but a big shout out to John Haynes, who has advised and helped us so often, as well as to Fama Lipinski, who has supplied us with hundreds of pumpkins, and the many businesses in town who have been so generous in their financial support. And I would like to mention Bruce Markey, who passed recently, who was a generous sponsor and a patron, generous patron, so we wanted to, I just wanted to lift his name up. We have a gem right here in our own backyard, and have an opportunity to be part of something bigger than ourselves. So up here, you will see the Bay Circuit Trail. So the Bay Circuit Trail was started as an outer Emerald Necklace, you can think of an Emerald Necklace, mimicking the inner necklace, Emerald Necklace, designed by the landscape artist Frederick Law Olmsted, and that is in Boston, a lot of the parks that are in there. The outer necklace links parks, open spaces, and waterways, all the way from Plum Island by Newburyport in the North Shore, all the way down to Kingston in the South Shore. It is a 230-mile corridor of 37 cities and towns, linking 37 cities and towns, and it's well on its way to becoming a protected greenway around Boston. There are some major gaps, and one of those portions and those gaps occurs in East Bridgewater. In recent years, more and more people are hiking and walking the trail, this trail. In fact, recent, report has, just like the Appalachian Mountain Trail, where people hike it every year, there have been 60 people that have completed the Bay Circuit Trail. Just imagine if we had the opportunity to be part of an Appalachian Trail movement, and we actually do. This is our Massachusetts-owned Appalachian Mountain Trail, and that's where I'd like to end.
So Diane is the past.
Yes.
What we've done, this has been something that the-
I am going to talk about the present. This is something the Friends of East Bridgewater Trails have been working on for 20 years. They've made a lot of progress, but they kind of had a loss of momentum over the years, just being a very small group, a lot of change in membership, things like that. Over the last, well, since they've been doing it, there's definitely been more of increased interest in using the outdoors, culminating in the last year, especially during lockdown, when if you tried to walk a verge pond or anything, you had a hard time finding parking. And in the meantime, the small Appalachian, or the small Bay Circuit Trail Alliance has been kind of taken under the wing of the Appalachian Mountain Club, much bigger group. Appalachian Mountain Club has some very motivated people, and they reached out to us in the past year a couple times to do some maintenance on the Bay Circuit Trail, also to, as John knows, to maybe work on renovating the boardwalk over at Poor Meadow Brook, which was built by a couple Eagle Scouts, but it's in pretty bad disrepair. That is part of the Bay Circuit Trail. The Appalachian Mountain Club got excited about the work we've done, and contacted us basically about trying to kind of restart closing this gap. And as you, yeah, there's the gap, this is a general view of it, it's not a very good one. If you go back for a second, Amy, the, we're the biggest gap other than the Tuxbury-Bell Ricka Gap up there, which actually is currently being closed by the Appalachian Mountain Club. So if you can go forward, basically, it's a, it's pretty low-hanging fruit to complete this. It's all rail trail, or sorry, it's all railbed. Can you see if you can get to at least the beginning? And basically, it starts, if you know where Ironworks Park is in Bridgewater, it's a beautiful little park. It starts, you could go from there along the rails, and can you see if you can find that picture, please? Well, then, we can show this, just this is the basic gap here that we're talking about. And can you fast forward, yeah, more? There. So this is, you can kind of see along here, here's the border of Bridgewater and East Bridgewater. This is not water, this is just wetlands, but you can clearly see in the satellite imagery the old railbed. Here's some more, too. This, oops, go back.
Oh, if you touch the screen, it changes.
So this is old railbed, you can clearly see in satellite imagery, this is railbed as well. There's Johnny Macaroni's over here, this is West Street. We've walked the trail, it's fairly clear, and all of the, so this goes from the border of Bridgewater to West Street, then it goes up to basically Spring Street, and that's where we're talking about ending. And then the Bay Circuit Trail follows the roads sometimes when there's no trails. And so at that point, it goes over to Bennett Lane. So, what was I going to say? Oh, all of this is still owned by the MBTA, which in the past, we've gotten agreement from them to rent us the land for a dollar for 100 years. So all of this is seeming pretty achievable at this point, and it's part of a larger picture. One more person to talk about the future, Ms. Michael Banksen.
Thanks, Petra. So as Petra just mentioned, there's a lot of reasons to do this now. We have a, you know, an increased interest in outdoor recreation, you know, partially promoted by everybody, you know, being stuck at home and wanting to go outside and walk during COVID. There's an increased, you know, political and government interest in providing more outdoor recreations and trails and such. And we, you know, have the ability to build on a huge history of success with the Bay Circuit Alliance in their efforts to make this, you know, 200-plus mile network of green spaces around the outer Boston area. So there's a lot of things that are really coming into play now, and we think it's a really good time to do it, particularly since the Appalachian Mountain Club is interested in helping us get it done. So we really think that now's a good time to do something. But looking past this low-hanging fruit, just to connect a small portion of the Bay Circuit Trail that isn't complete through our area here, if you think about extending this railbed, which is, you know, just waiting to be converted into a recreational trail, if you continue it north, even though it won't be an official part of the Bay Circuit Trail, it goes right through the business district of downtown East Bridgewater. So you could, you know, envision having dinner at Johnny Macaroni's in West Bridgewater, walking down the trail to, you know, remove some of those calories, then being tempted to stop at the ice cream shop in East Bridgewater, and then having to walk all the way to Whitman to burn that off. But you could, in theory, start at Stanley Ironworks in Bridgewater, at the Ironworks Park, all the way to the south, and walk all the way up to the Whitman MBTA station on this old railbed, which not only would, you know, be a beautiful walk through a lot of, you know, scenic forested areas, but it would also connect two arms of the MBTA commuter rail. So theoretically, someone in Boston could take the MBTA to, to the Bridgewater train station, and then take this seven or eight-mile hike and get up to Whitman, and then take that arm of the MBTA back to Boston. So, you know, this, this is completely a longer-term vision than this, you know, relatively straightforward idea of helping to complete the official Bay Circuit Trail. But, you know, it's a lot to think about, but it's a very nice idea to think about the economic benefit like that that was produced by the Minuteman Trail that goes all the way from Arlington out to Metro West, Lexington and that area. Lots of people use that, and there's lots of restaurants and businesses right along it. So before I, change it, before I end, I'd like to point out one important aspect of the momentum behind these types of ideas, in that the Baker-Polito administration in 2018 initiated the Mass Trails Program, which provides funding, it's matching funding, so that's not as good as just, you know, shoveling money to someone, but funding, and possibly even more importantly, technical assistance with planning and, you know, design and things like that, to groups and municipalities like East Bridgewater and the Friends of East Bridgewater Trails. So you might ask what exactly we're here to ask you to do, and we don't really have a specific request of you today. Hopefully, you know, at some point, we would get to the point where we would be, you know, asking for specific permissions to do this or do that. But right now, our, our goal is to just, excuse me, keep you informed that we have this opportunity, particularly in light of renewed interest from the Appalachian Mountain Club. But we're asking for your sort of moral support, and, you know, being, being able to say that, you know, when we're negotiating with someone to, you know, help us move forward on this, that we have the support and, you know, spiritual backing of the town and the Board of Selectmen. So we're happy to try and answer any questions or receive any feedback that you might have for us now. Thank you.
I guess the first step would be to get a hold of the state organization, the Appalachian Trail Association, and trying to work out some kind of a grant type of a deal. And I think we will need someone to scoot in grant writing or something along that thing, just to get it started. I think everyone would love to be involved in it, because after I play pickleball, I can take a walk to Whitman.
Well, the pickleball court at Sagem Rock Community Center is very close to the Bay Circuit Trail.
I just wanted to say that the Appalachian Mountain Club, when we have, you know, have had a couple of talks with them, and they have spoken of ideas of grants that we can get, there's a lot of funding out there that they say people don't even use. And so they were pretty excited that this is probably an applicable project that would- so, yeah, basically, we're asking you guys to, to give us your okay to move, you know, forward and talks with them, to try to chase some funding down. Obviously, we don't want the town to have to deal with funding questions, so-
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
And Howard?
Yeah, a couple of points. My classmate, John Better, established a rail trail in Whitman, and it goes from August Street, just from, it's like a few hundred feet down this hill from Washington Street. At the, in the, that trail goes all the way back to the St. James Cemetery in Enzaya. And on the West Bridgewater side, component of manufacturing and the body shop across the street, that's probably a mile, mile and a half trail that goes all the way out to West Street. And so we have, we have these trails available now, but we also want you to understand that a rail trail is considered like a linear pack, because it's a 50-foot wide strip of land, and, you know, people can bike it, size, ride horses even. You probably need a harder surface, paved, 10 to 12 feet wide, and it will be, comes right to the center of town, so, like we said, the ice cream stands and all can do a helpful lot of business with having rail trail. Thank you.
No, I, very impressive, actually, I Googled it while you guys were talking, just to get a little bit more information. What is the strip of area you're talking about that needs to be reconnected in some aspect? Is it a couple miles, mile and a half, two miles, or?
It is, unfortunately, in our confusion of maps, yes. If you can imagine, yeah, it goes from the border of Bridgewater, so there's, you know where, what is that, High Street that the bridge goes over?
Oh, yeah.
Train tracks. If you bushwhacked into the bushes there, you'd be on the trail. Obviously, we can only worry about East Bridgewater, but we have friends in Bridgewater that are-
that are, would probably hook up with us and get a trail all the way to Ironworks. So anyway, from the border of East Bridgewater, Bridgewater, past West Street to Spring Street. And if you look at a Google Map satellite image, you will see the rail bed.
Okay.
It's walkable for the most part now.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. It wouldn't need a lot of work, mostly just anointing as an official part of the Bay Circuit Trail and permission from MBTA and potentially National Grid to...
Is there any private property on there that you'd have to work with, any private residents, or?
No. No, it's all owned by MBTA and National Grid. MBTA has previously given us permission, and I know that, and Appalachian Mountain Club says that National Grid has given this kind of permission.
Now, do we have anything, the MBTA, in writing?
No, but we, that was the kind of thing we didn't really want to move on until...
We took, we took...
Well, we haven't passed.
They, MBTA Transit Realty, they call their property for all of transit. And they, let's see, they sent us a package of language of like 500 pages that's probably in the Slutman's records of '04. Nobody wants to spend the time to go through it. And Mr. Dick Forn and his granting, grant you decision with the town, nixed it because it went right next to his property. And so the whole package got set aside, and you could probably find it in the records someplace, but it's like 500 pages, and it doesn't legally tie the town to anything. They said, that's why it would be a lease, a 99-year lease. And anything that is there, is there, and it wouldn't, as long as it didn't disturb, you know, what's there and just went over it, it is no problem. Okay.
Yeah, I'm thrilled to see this come back up. I remember going to meetings years ago with Howard and Diane and talking about this, and I thought it was kind of dead in the water, so I think it's great that it's a possibility again, and you certainly have my support, and it sounds like all of us, so whatever we can do to help it, move along.
That realized is that we tried for a long time to do it, but it's up. And now we have a bigger interest from Appalachian Mountain Club.
Great. Let them do the heavy lifting.
Yeah, exactly. And I think, you know, the state government is more interested in these kinds of trails. There's a lot more money out there, a lot more interest, so.
Good. Thank you for coming in.
Oh, thank you.
Chief?
Yours to chair. The trail itself, is it paved? Is it hard-packed? How wide is it? Because I look at this from a fire standpoint, if I have a fire in the middle of woods out there, that's, sometimes I have a hard time getting into that, if there's an established trail, and I know exactly where you're talking about, and there's a lot of wooded land out there, it would be a benefit for the fire department at least.
Well, I mean, it's very variable. I mean, the Bay Circuit Trail is anywhere from like a real narrow...
One foot.
...path to...
That would work.
You're on the streets, literally walking on the streets.
So this, I know, so I know exactly where you're talking about here. But this is an old rail bed, which is probably at least 10 feet wide anyways.
Yes, and nothing grows on it.
Would the trail encompass that entire 10-foot, like rail bed?
Well, that's the question that, you know, we want to see what...
Because I, I mean, I can drive an off-road vehicle, like a four-wheel drive on that...
You could.
...to access, you know, areas that...
Yes.
If we had fires.
It's so packed and gravelled and, you know, that there's nothing growing on it except for grass.
I just didn't know if your plans were to pave over that, or?
No, not...
I know that's costly, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's why we were talking about present and future.
Yeah, right.
Present is just a trail that people can get on, and as small as it has to be.
It's really open.
Future, we could have a beautiful, maybe rail trail that goes from Whitman to Bridgewater, you know, 10 feet wide. Behind this guy.
Question to, why, so what would prevent simply the MBTA granting the access over? Is there a formal process, the town has to adopt it as a rail trail, or is, why can't the MBTA just clearly say, this is now part of the rail trail?
I think the Board of Selectmen needs to dig out the old package from '04 that we sent here by the Transit Realty people.
You were on the spot, weren't you?
It'd be $2 now, though.
It's a 99-year lease. It says, it obligates you to...
So it becomes property?
I think there is some kind of agreement between the...
So it becomes a responsibility of the town?
I think that's one of our questions we need, because we have not been in that place to even open up that discussion, so that could have changed from 2004. But, I think we need to open up the discussion with all the interested parties, the MBTA, and that's why we're starting with you, to come here tonight, because we don't, we have no legal authority to open that discussion. But, to move forward, we would need that discussion, to have them with MBTA, with National Grid, with the Appalachian Mountain Club, and see what we can come up with that. So we need that creative permission to move forward.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, there has to be an agreement with the town and MBTA. But there are already parts of Bay Circuit Trail in East Bridgewater. I mean, it's already part of East Bridgewater. So, and every other town, you know, there is an agreement, or however they've done it, there's, again, that's how we have to do to...
Conversations with the...
...the Appalachian Mountain Club.
Conversations with the folks from the Appalachian Mountain Club, not anything formal, but, you know, their general comment was that it's a very low-risk thing for a town to enter into one of these, you know, 99-year leases, and that it's becoming pretty commonplace between different municipalities and MBTA or even, you know, National Grid. So the, you know, the one important point is from, you know, the part of the Bay Circuit that starts down at the Stanley Ironworks, almost all the way up to West Street, a lot of that is National Grid, and then it becomes parallel, you know, side by side with MBTA land, and that's all open, to go back to your question. That's all, you know, maybe it gets a little weedy, but it's, you know, 10-foot or more width of easily, you know, walkable trail all the way up to West Street. But then, once you cross West Street, it becomes, you know, much less walkable at that point. So that would require some, you know, more effort than a bunch of, you know, FEVT members with hand clippers. Not that we wouldn't try.
You have our permission.
I think we've heard you, and we're all in support of you, so, Mr. Howard?
One more question. There's a fellow by the name of Fred Delapena, hyphenated Delapena, and he's in Northampton, N.A., and he's gone around to several different towns. He even spoke here to the Selectmen's office back in '04. But he's helped people with these rail trails. And there's quite a system now throughout the state, Fred Delapena, Green Solutions, but farm of God, or Green West.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, keep us posted and whatever you need from us.
So if we can just... [inaudible].
Thanks for having me. How is everybody today?
Great. Continue.
Well, it's...
Getting late, Chris.
Well, it's May, and that means Memorial Day at the end of the month, and I'm proud to say we are on schedule for an in-person ceremony to talk with the Health Department. All guidelines will be followed, regular, you know, regular ceremony. The Patriotic Committee, I've been in touch with Paul, they are putting the ceremony together. Our representatives at the state level have been notified. Some may be able to make it, some may not. EB Camp will put the program together and then air it, as they usually do through the month of June. Flags are back on for all our cemeteries. We've got all cemeteries covered at this time, no holes there. And then, two additional things I just want to make you guys aware of, is we are having another food drive at the COA in June, on the 24th, and that's going to go from 10:00 to 12:00. And then, one last administration note, there's a new state system that encompasses our Chapter 115 program for our assistance here in East Bridgewater. And I've put a plan together where, even if the state system does come up with a little hiccup, where our veterans here will not see any dip in benefits, they won't even know anything's going on behind the scenes, so.
Great.
Pending questions?
No, it's, the Memorial Day is going to be on the 31st.
Yes.
At what time?
10 o'clock over at...
10 o'clock at the common. Okay. Great. So good to hear it's going to be in person this year. Any questions?
No, thank you, Chris.
No, great. Looking forward to it.
Excellent.
Thank you. And again, I just while Chris is here, I want to commend him. He is doing an utterly fantastic job with the veterans. He talks on almost a daily basis, and thank you for taking care of them.
Thank you, Ross Ford. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. Madam Clerk, action items. If you don't mind, can we do number four first?
Yep, I don't mind. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into a contract signing with our IT Director, Ryan McGonigal.
Second.
Discussion. Ryan, you're front and center.
Here I was, thinking all those people are here to support me tonight. They were.
You have the support of us. What more could you need?
Still here, Ryan.
We saved you for Ratings Week.
I don't know if you're going to say it, or if you have it?
Yes, sir.
I thought we were going to discuss this in executive session first.
I thought, except for one question that was being asked, I didn't, there was only one question I thought, if we all agreed on that, we were going to go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, there is the option of, that I did discuss earlier today. Counsel has requested to speak to the board about, you know, the several employment agreements that are expiring on June 30th, including Ryan's. In the interest of advancing Ryan's, perhaps, if Counsel thinks it's necessary to, you know, to discuss, to discuss this with you in an exec, we could go there, we could go to an exec to discuss only that. You know, we have a whole lot more up on the board for our exec sessions, discuss, you know, Ryan's contract, recess the exec, come back into exec session, and move on from there. That's a, that is an option.
Mr. Chairman, you can still vote this contract tonight. There was a couple of language issues that I wanted to go over with the board. You could go into executive session and option, your option is to come back to open session and vote the contract, if we were to do it. But I just wanted to discuss a couple of language issues that apply to Ryan's contract and a few others before the board voted. I don't think there was any material changes to wages or anything along those lines, really. Just some terms that I think should be included.
Can we vote the contract conditional upon any conversation? We may have an executive session, because we're going to end up going back to, into executive session again. If we're only going to talk about Ryan's now, then we'll have to come back, then go back out to, is that what you think?
You can vote it, you can vote it conditionally, if that's your preference.
Okay. What's, what's your feeling on this? We can go into executive now, and then just come back after talking just about Ryan's, or we can just vote out?
I mean, we could just do executive, we could leave the room. I don't think, probably not going to take that long, just to go over this and then come back, just to keep it clean there?
I think we should go to another room rather than have to shut it off.
Right, that's what I meant, yeah. We can leave.
Yeah, go in your office.
Yeah, just do it, and then that way, it's done and he's done, and that's my, just my idea.
Make a motion pursuant to passage to General law 38, paragraph 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, to conduct collective bargaining sessions, our contract negotiations with non-union personnel IT Director. At this time, it will just be the IT Director. And then we will return to open session. A roll call?
Peter Spigot, correct? No, I'm not collecting anymore, right? Just going by his chair.
Carol Julius, Clerk, aye.
David Sheedy, Chair. We will be returned very shortly to open session. Okay, it is now eight minutes before seven, we have returned to open session. And now we will talk once again about Ryan McGonigal's contract. Would you like to tell us how happy you are to become with us full-time after all?
Wow, this is really putting me on the spot here.
Yeah, you know, I try to do that once a meeting.
I will say, it's, I am happy to be giving one town my full focus. I'm sad to leave Hanson, great town, the staff has been amazing to work with. I saw the same thing with East Bridgewater. But, it's going to be a real benefit to be proactive rather than reactive in a lot of situations. So.
Okay. Have I said before we...
No, I'm thrilled that you're going to be here full-time. I worked in two locations myself for the last 10 years, even in the same town, and it's tough. You always feel like you're in one place, you should be in the other. When you're in that, so I think you'll be...
I found that the fire is never where you are.
Exactly.
It's always...
Yeah, so, no, I think it's great, we're lucky to have you.
Peter?
Yeah, no, I welcome the board full-time. I mean, it's, you know, it's good to have somebody that's got your capabilities, and we look forward to working with you. It's been a pleasure to this point, for sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, with the signatures.
All right, are we going in order now?
Yes, ma'am.
Good with that? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award general service agreement with environmental partners for engineering services.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Spigot?
Yeah, so, this is, this is a real step forward for the town of East Bridgewater. First, I want to start by saying I want to thank the Assessors Department, Board of Health, Conservation, Planning, DPW, and the Zoning Boards for getting together. This process was started some months ago. We were looking for a candidate that would encompass all of the, all the engineering work that's done throughout the town. One of the issues I think we were having, as far as different departments, was they were dealing with two or three different engineering firms, and it made it tough for some of the contractors and landowners to get things done at a quicker pace. And I think what will happen here is in the discussions with all these departments, that we will see now one firm reviewing plans that encompass a lot of different departments that carry over. This is, this contract is not very lengthy, as far as contracts do. I will say that the four points that I just want to make on this are that there will be some service calls awarded in this contract, so that if you have a quick question, whether it be DPW or Conservation, they pick up the phone, they ask a couple of quick questions to the environmental partners and get some answers fairly quickly. The second part of this will be the individual contracts will be with each department, so it will be out of their budget. There isn't, I don't think there will be any change in the departments paying the percentage to the environmental, to environmental deposits, as they were the... to the environmental, to bio departments as they were the other engineering firms. The next point would be that they'll be looking at overall plans. So we envision this being a company that would get involved with a subdivision that may have some wetland issues, you know, and will be looking at it in all different perspectives, from the zoning portion to the building portion to the planning portion. We did have a discussion with the Health Department this last week, me and John did. They were looking for help with septic reviews and some titling stuff as far as the septic goes. What are the, what are the words I'm missing, John?
Perk test.
They look at the hole.
Yeah, perk test.
Perk test, thank you. Jesus couldn't remember. So perk test is, and what they said is they could certainly help in a quicker fashion. We asked them for a request for a bid for that, and it was expensive, very expensive. I think it was somewhere around $500, $600. That is not what this company is being brought in to do. They're not coming in just to look at perk tests, at holes, watch, you know, the water. They would help in those areas, I think, if need be, but they're not for that. Luckily for us, Sue Malloy in the Department of Health, we're able to find a contractor that does that. That's all they do, and they'll do it for a lot less money than environmental partners could do. So I just wanted to make it clear that this is a move to look at all these properties that we have in a hole and that will eliminate, to some degree, each department working with different engineering firms. I can let John speak a little bit too. I think he's the only one here from there that tells us.
So I think Peter's elaborated on exactly what the towns hope to do. Essentially, we've found a firm that can take a comprehensive engineering look at the entire package from the preliminary design and see it through to when it comes before the town, a town meeting for, to be an as-built, accepted townway. And again, it's going to be that global oversight. All the departments will be able to utilize the same firm, and the individuals will, from the firm, and they've appointed point people, project managers, that will be able to speak, again, across all the departments to us and provide consistent, professional reports, feedback, and as well as Peter elaborated on it. Not only will it have a benefit to the, as an individual, individual apartments or the town, the hall as a whole, but I think from the applicant bringing a project forward, they're going to see an expedited process with efficiencies that will make it a much smoother and, we'll see. It'll be, for them, the process will be somewhat expedited so that they won't be stumbling across some of the delays that they have, where you've had separate firms reviewing things on different timelines and such. We'll be able to expedite all that, and that will, in the end, result in a better project, which means the project will be permitted more quickly, which then means it's constructed more quickly. For any applicant, when they come before the town, that's their goal in the first place, is to get their project permitted so they can get it constructed. And I think this will do that, and I think the community will see, will, East Bridgewater will reap the reward for that.
Yeah, we've seen enough, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, no, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I've observed since I've, since I've been here, there's, you know, there's more to this. On the front end of a project, even pre-application period, Peter and, you know, the various department personnel have committed themselves to, you know, to meeting on a staff level to coordinate these things. And so you can envision on the front end, even before an application is submitted, that they'd be working with this working group that they've assembled. Our engineer could be present, the projects engineers could be present. And all the participants, the conservation agent, you know, and others, they know what their boards are looking for and things like that. And I'm going to say it, the key to an expedited review process is to submit good plans. Okay? And they've developed a model here that will help them on the front end, pre-submission, you know, of those plans. So this contract award aside, you've done all this other work. You know, what, you know, what can we do? Well, you know, you're staging it, you're staging it right now and had a couple of meetings. I remember I walked into one.
Yeah, yeah, you're the wrong one.
But thank you for letting me say it.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the site plan reviews is a, is a, the brainchild of a few different people. Certainly not me. That would be, you know, DPW, Rob Ken's been the catalyst of getting all the IT stuff up. Craig Windsor, I mean, gosh, the kid just knows, you know, so much about the wetlands and the areas. And of course, Roy Gardner's knowledge. And it's been a pleasure to watch these guys interact with each other in those reviews every two weeks. And I think it's, it's going to start to show in some of the projects that we see happening. We're going to invite them in, once we do the contract, to, you know, talk more openly. The two representatives, Scott and.
Ryan.
Ryan, will, I'm sure will come to the board meeting and explain in more detail. But more importantly, I think what they'll do is they'll have, we're just going to set up a time for, for all departments to come in and have kind of, and even contractors. I think we talked about having outside people come in that, you know, do a lot of developing in this town to, to listen to what they're, you know, what they're going to do to help with those processes and going forward over the next couple of weeks. But it's a real step in the right direction. And it leads me into my last thing regarding some of the changes that we've seen here. I've got the Holy Grail sitting over here. What I speak of is the commitment letter from the City of Brockton that has been signed by the mayor, as well as the town solicitor, excuse me, the, yeah, the town solicitor, right, that they're allowing us 100,000 gallons to start with for the sewer project down on Route 18, which gives us now the ability to go out and actually start to really talk to the people in that 30, 300-acre area about their plans to start to move that project forward. And I can tell you from the years of trying to put this together with all these departments, upstairs, downstairs, into the treasurer, accountant, everybody that we've talked to about this, we're going to see some significant home development. We're going to see some significant jobs being created down there. And then we're going to see some people that have been, and we can't forget about these people that have been there, the Bobby Dees, the Frank from Mockingbird, see them get some real benefit to actually having sewer opportunities on their property. See that whole corridor developed from Highland Street all the way down to the Whitman Line. So it's, it's exciting. I called John as soon as John Clifford called me, and I called John Haines right afterwards because it's, well, you both know, it's been an uphill, uphill battle. But we got there, and I want to thank John Clifford for all his efforts as well to finally get it. So they've signed it, we'll sign the original so that it can be held in the office. And I'm sure you'll see some, some more developments over the course of the next, next few weeks.
Again, I just want to thank everyone that was involved in this. This has been talked about even the years that I was sitting upstairs on the planning board.
Yeah.
We talked about this, and finally, again, with a lot of people pushing. It's, it's going to take a long time for people to understand how much it really means to the town, but they'll see it in the future when they see growth over in that area. So thank you for all.
I'm good. You know, I always tell you government moves slow, but this is exceptionally slow. So congratulations on all of it.
One year's in the making.
Yeah, I mean, this goes way back. But congratulations on getting all those pieces of the puzzle finally put together and everybody that worked so hard to make it happen. It's, it's a, it's a great thing. Pop the prosecco.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 26, 2021, 6:30 p.m., Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the event permit to application.
Second.
Discussion. Again, this is a process that was put into effect pre-pandemic, and it's been used now. And now we're just going to make sure that everything is all tied together on that permit. It's, it's something that's really needed to, again, talking about all parties in the town that will be involved in an event happening in town. They'll all have the opportunity to sit there and take a look at it and make sure it's okay with every department involved. All those in favor?
It's a good checklist.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, we already did our contracts. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application for reconsideration for the amendment change that East Bridgewater Commercial Club outdoor pavilion sat at 140 people.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, so this was a really confusing situation. And I will try to my best to explain. So there were some issues between understanding from the building department and the applicant on the property that we were talking about and what they were trying to accomplish. They had brought up in conversation with the building department about a tented lodger event. You know, I'm not going to say it, but I will, the Chili Chowder Fest, or something of large of those scales. They are certainly, as I had told Patrick, they, what they're looking to do is just to get that outdoor pavilion, the permit for that area only. Of course, they're still working with the ABCC on their alcohol license. But one of the things they need to do in order to get the approval for that is to have this application by us taken care of or voted on, and then to pass to them to actually have it sent into the ABCC. This is only for the pavilion, the outdoor 140 capacity that they would be able to use. The other confusion part was when we did vote a couple of weeks ago, we were actually only voting on the extension of the restaurant from outside, the outside use, which is completely different than this, and they didn't, the commercial club did not understand that. They thought that they were all in one, so.
Okay.
That's the discussion about what this is about. And again, once we get this done, they will continue their work with the ABCC to get their license in order before we even look at the alcohol license.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the request from Corin Ziegler of East Bridgewater Community Gardens for the use of the Sation Rock Farm for a pizza picnic. Event is rescheduled from Monday, June 21st to Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the request from DeeDee Rogers of the Patriotic Activities Committee for the use of the town common on May 31st, 2021, for observation of Memorial Day in honor of our men and women who have died in service to the country from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and for a Flag Day ceremony to burn old and no longer usable flags from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Discussion.
Just coordinated with Chris, isn't that the?
Yes.
Okay, this is part of that, what you're doing, huh?
We're dragging Peter.
Great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve pending receipt and event permit approval, the request from Kathleen Wood of Community Coalition for Change for the use of the town common for celebration of progress, unity, and growth in social justice in our communities. This will be a multicultural event with food vendors, music, speakers, booth merchants, and standout, highlighting local cultural businesses and making East Bridgewater more inclusive and welcoming. Event will be on June 13th, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., rain date of June 27th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion. I think there are still a few things that have to be ironed out. I think we can approve this with, there's just a couple of outstanding things like.
I think it was the insurance.
Insurance for one.
Yeah, and I haven't gotten 100% feedback from the Board of Health.
Okay.
It has something to do with the food trucks.
But I know they're, they're working.
They're working, yeah.
The Board of Health to get this set up.
Yeah.
Porter parties or something to that effect, where they're, they're going to be having that many people. I know the police and the fire in DPW are all aware of what they are scheduled to do that day, and that seems to be acceptable to everybody. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the following applications for one-day liquor licenses for the Villa at Ritter Country Club for events on the following dates. All events shall follow COVID-19 safety standards, May 23rd, 2021, June 3rd, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the resignation of Kelly Milne from the Conservation Commission effective May 11th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion. I'd just like to thank you, Kelly, for all the years she has put in on conservation and will show well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that we establish a gift account for Police Department K-9 program startup.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Priscill. Do you just give a little more detail?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you've entertained the chief and deputy chief, I think, one or two meetings ago on the, on the establishment of a police K-9 program. The K-9 would be donated to the town. It's tangible property, and I've got the statutory reference there, you know, the type of gift account for you to set up on that. And if you don't mind, I'll morph into the, you know, the item after. You'd be asked to establish a gift account for receipt and expenditure of cash donations for the support of the, of the K-9 program. So it's a two-part, it's a two-part thing to, you know, get the department started.
Tana Cotton is aware of this and processing to our settlement?
She's aware of it. I haven't had any.
I believe we already have the account set up.
We have, great.
We're all set.
Fantastic.
It's all set.
Yes, sir.
One.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we establish a gift account for receipt and expenditure of cash donations for the K-9 program purposes.
Second.
Since it's already been done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that we approve the request from the Southeastern Regional Service Group to award a contract to WB Mason for paper items for a 12-month period commencing on July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Discussion. Again, this is a program we've been involved in for how many years now, John?
Couple.
Five plus.
Yeah. It seems to be a great service and saving the town quite a bit of money.
Yeah, sure does.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request from Southeastern Regional Service Group to award a contract to WB Mason for office supplies for a two-year period for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is the end of our action items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the TA report is done, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Rebecca?
I don't have any announcements, other than the next meeting will be a Tuesday, May 23rd.
And I have resolved my conflict.
Oh, good.
Dale said yes?
Wedding dress fitting.
I'm not going to. Board discussions? No, we don't want to have them.
You've talked enough.
Talked enough.
I have nothing to say. It's been the longest meeting ever.
I'm good.
Make a motion, we go back into executive session to discuss what we previously had reported, and we will not be returning to the regular meeting. Roll call, Dave Sheedy, Chair.
Peter Spigot, Vice Chair.
Carol Julius, Clerk.
Thank you. Have a great week.
It's everybody.